Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting Monday, Monday, March 19th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First announcement is Easter Ignite at Millville Library. It's Saturday, March 24th, 1:00 p.m., ages 3 to 12, welcome. Registration is required. You can call telephone number 508-883-1887, or email millvillesmss.org. The second announcement, there are only two tonight. This is, Ranger Chuck is retiring, and on Thursday, March 29th, at 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., there's a little bit of a celebration at the Blackstone Hall at Valencourt Folk Art Manchuk Mills, 9 Main Street in Sutton. And there's a RSVP requirement for that.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just, the reason why this is in your packet is because for anybody who's been in the Blackstone Valley for any amount of time, who's done anything with the Heritage Corridor, Chuck Arning has been there right from the very beginning, and he really is an icon. And just so that people understand how important his role is, I just, this past weekend, was involved in a forum in which he helped arrange, but you, one of the things he talked about is that even though he's leaving, his actual ranger space is not going to be replaced. So that's a big loss, and it has to do with the funding at the national level, but I hope we can convince people of how important it is to have a ranger. And, you know, they've had the whole ranger program to get young people involved and all of that.
Yes, they do it every summer at West Hill Dam.
Yep. So I just can't imagine him without him. But he's, he's not only a dear friend, he's just somebody who's been a really good person to advocate for every town in the valley, and Millville's been no different, and I think...
How long did he do that?
It's been at least 25 years.
I was going to say, I remember being young, and him, the videotapes coming on cable throughout the valley.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yes. And so, so it's a big, we're excited for him to go on to other, you know, I think...
Another phase of the United States.
Right. One of the things I heard about is that he might actually try to be a voice for documentaries. He's got a great voice.
He does.
And I think that would be wonderful. But if anybody who can go out on March 29th, just to stop by and wish him well up at Manchuk Mills at the Valencourt Folk Art, that would be, I think, appreciated by him very much.
Thank you. Move on to minutes. We'll take, there are a lot of them tonight. We'll, we'll take them one at a time. On March 5th, 2018, minutes.
I make a motion to accept the Monday, March 5th Board of Selectmen minutes as written.
Second.
Rule.
Aye.
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 Abstain.
No, wait, because I wasn't here.
Right.
October 19th, 2017, executive session.
I make a motion to accept the October 19th, 7:20 p.m. executive session as written.
Second.
Rule.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain from these, because I came in 20 minutes late that evening.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written for October 26th, 2017.
I second that.
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, November 22nd, this was an executive session. There a motion?
Make a motion to exec, the, accept the executive session minutes of November 22nd, 4:15 p.m., as written.
Second.
Rule.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
I make a motion to accept the Wednesday, December 6th meeting as written.
Second.
Rule.
Aye.
Aye.
Departments and boards, based up is council on aging. We have, we're in receipt of a letter, the Board of Selectmen is in receipt of a letter from Jill Anderson, Millville Senior Center Director. It reads as follows. "The Millville Council on Aging submits for your approval the name of Lois LaFlem, 150 Main Street, Millville, Mass. 01529, to fill the vacancy on the Council on Aging board. Mrs. LaFlem's letter of interest was read at the March 4th, 2018 Council on Aging meeting, and all president agrees she would be an excellent candidate. I would look for a motion to accept the appointment of Lois LaFlem to the Council on Aging."
I make a motion to appoint Lois LaFlem to the Council on Aging to run through June 30th, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point out, Lois also sent a letter, aside from the Council on Aging recommendation, which she has worked and been co, a coordinator of the Mills on Thursday from Tri-Valley Services, that she's also been a volunteer and enjoyed the Pitch League, and has also served on the council in the past. So I think she'd offer, again, a good perspective historically with the, with the actual council.
Thank you.
The made in second.
No.
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 Whatever.
We had a motion for a second, we need to vote.
Yep.
All right. Aye.
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 Number five. On the agenda.
Yeah. Next department is the Police Department. Waiting on the police.
Gone just as mysteriously as he came.
There he is.
So. We're in receipt of two letters you submitted to appoint two part-time police officers, both of which have been through the part-time police academy. Could you give us some input regarding the individuals?
I did lose a part-time officer to the town of Buxbridge a couple of months ago. So we're looking for a couple of replacements, and we found two great candidates. Stephen LaCarver, he's a sergeant with the St. Vincent Hospital Police Department. He's been there for about eight years. He graduated from the academy in 2010. A very mature individual, very well qualified, very well trained. I think he's going to be a good asset to the department. He's going to be here for a while. He's a little older. I like to hire him a little bit older, make it a little bit more mature than, I'm looking to go somewhere else right away. So I think he's a great candidate, he's going to stay. Roger LaValle, interesting person, a full-time fireman from the town of Buxbridge. He's also been on the SIMLOC SWAT team for the last two years. He graduated from the part-time academy almost three years ago. Once again, well-trained, well-educated in police work, even though he's a fireman. So I think his availability is probably more important to me, because given the schedule with the fire department of two days on and 20 days off, I guess, he can work quite big for us. So I think they're two great, great prospects. I think they'll be with us for a long time, and that's what I look for, because every time we hire someone, we train them, and they go, it'll cause a lot of confusion and work.
I actually met Mr. LaValle.
You did?
Friday evening at the mother-son event.
Okay.
He was coming around with Officer Shepherd.
Yeah, very mature, a very mature person. That's what we look for, on the mature individuals, and certainly he is, along with Stephen. So I think, once again, we found two great, great candidates.
Thank you. I'll ask for a vote to appoint, first, Stephen LaCarver as a part-time police officer.
So moved.
Do you want to put through June 30th, 18?
Is that how you want it, Chief?
Yeah, usually I would...
Yes, you go from July, correct.
Yep. So as of, until June 30th, 2018.
Rule.
Aye. They beat me to it.
Aye.
Aye.
Your name is?
I'll let you have the next one.
Roger LaValle, appointment, here a motion to appoint Roger.
Motion to appoint Roger LaValle as part-time police officer through June 30th of 2018.
Second.
Rule.
Aye.
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 All set?
All set. Thank you.
Thank you.
The town clerk advises that the town election, as we all know, is, will be Monday, April 2nd, at St. Augustine's Church Hall from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And the treasure collector announces that the 2018 excise bills are due on March 29th. Public forum.
Come on up, Richard. Richard Hurtos, 70 Quaker Street. I have two or three questions. I'm not sure if I'm entitled to one question or three minutes, or I'm not sure how that works, but do I have a limited number of questions?
We get three minutes. Three minutes.
Okay. I'll pick vouchers. I would like to know what the policy is for vouchers, because I've been to COA boards, I'm on a planning board, I'm on trustees for the park. There seems to be some confusion about vouchers. We don't know what's being spent. I don't even know what's being spent on payrolls. Is there a procedure to where a member or somebody could find out what's being spent per department?
I think we've already kind of addressed this a number of times. You do have a town administrator. Town administrator signs off ultimately on the overall warrants. That includes all the vouchers. After they go through our town accountant and our finance director, every department head knows the policy of being able to submit vouchers. Prior to a town administrator, there may have been boards that actually submitted vouchers. We recently, again, had our town council issue an opinion, a legal opinion, for our town. Whether people choose to like that or not, they represent our town, and they have decided, quite rightfully, that once we adopted a town administrative form of government, that followed suit. So I'd be more than happy to talk with you, Richard, on the side about that, if you would like, but as far as, you know, asking for information, you have every right to ask for information. If you have a department head, which you do in the planning board, you can certainly request what has been spent or not. It's a $20,000 department, so there certainly isn't any problem with being able to look at that budget at any point in time, and you, as a board member, have a right to ask that of your department head. But as far as who signs off on approval of vouchers, that it has already been determined through the change of administrative leadership in the community, this board no longer signs vouchers, and does not sign the overall warrant every week for vouchers, whether it's people's payroll, or whether it's any kind of invoices. So hopefully, if you need more clarification, be more than happy to meet with you.
So do you have a written procedure?
We have a bylaw, that anything that falls under the jurisdiction, any appointment to any particular position, any hiring that took place with this Board of Selectmen defaults to the town administrator, and that is clearly in the bylaw.
Now, we're still on vouchers. I didn't know if we had a written procedure for the vouchers, because I've been to different meetings, and it seems like there are different interpretations, and it would be nice if we had step one, step two, step three.
Listen, we can do that. I, I think that anything that was prior has still been one of those things that, once the bylaw is there, the bylaw speaks to that, and it actually outlines the jurisdiction of the town administrator. So whether you want a specific actual policy on that, I can look to see what we have on the docket for that. I just know that based on our bylaw, based on town council, I'm pretty clear on where that goes. It may not be comfortable for some other people who are used to doing it in a different way, but that's one of the growing pains that we have with, with the new town administrative form of government.
I, I might add that we're in the process of creating new bylaws, or not new bylaws, but updating them to reflect what we actually know and know. We were following current bylaw, and with the Attorney General's approval of the vote taking the town meeting to appoint a town administrator, we're in compliance with that. It's just that, I understand your issue or your concern, but we, we need to go back and just, in the bylaw, change the, you know, things like, first of all, affirm the procedure and remove words "Executive Secretary" and the like, and replace it with "Town Administrator." And that, that's quite a chore, Richard. And by the time that bylaw comes out, I mean, that, that packet, there's over 80 pages involved in that. So that's going to require legal, you know, further legal review and work by this board. I'm counting on the board, in my last year on the board, to get this all together.
Can I ask one more question?
The three minutes are up, but I'll...
You can submit it.
At our last, at one of our last planning board meeting, we had like a conference call scenario with Hillary on the conference call, and I had asked her when she thought she was coming back and her instructions.
We're not going to discuss, we're not going to discuss personnel. This is not the place to discuss personal leaves of any sort or personnel matters, but you can come to me as a planning board member.
Okay.
If I can share something with you, I will, and if not, it will remain as a personnel matter. And this is not for a public session. And we've had that discussion already. And I feel very strongly about that. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say, the only thing that I ask to be acknowledged is just to let you know that I know Lois LaFlem. This is all positive. And I've worked with her on the council, and she's an excellent appointment, and I think that she, she will do well for the seniors she has. That's all I wanted to say, but unfortunately, I wasn't able to say it before.
Thank you. It's the right time to say.
See, that's not...
It's the right time to say.
Get anything else?
Public forum is the right time to say.
Yes, I may have a few things, if you allow me. Speaking of bylaws, and I think we discussed this prior, the Council on Aging has bylaws as well, and they were adopted at the 2016 annual town meeting. And so they also have been approved by the Attorney General. And so that's what we have been going by, and obviously, there's a change, or someone tells me there's a change, but I don't think that that is going to override what the Attorney General has approved and what the...
Yeah. We've already been in touch with the Attorney General. The Attorney General doesn't, doesn't, I understand.
Yeah.
And actually, you're not on the Council on Aging anymore. You do have a Council on Aging chairman.
That's all right, I'm still very interested in the seniors.
And I understand that, and I understand that. And one of the things that we have done is, you know, issued with legal counsel and your senior center director, who's quite aware of her roles and responsibilities as an actual person who oversees the day-to-day interests of the senior center, and if you look at the bylaw...
Excuse me, excuse me, okay?
Mr. Chairman.
Okay. What, are you going to dictate to the chairman what he should do now?
No, I'm just asking him to pay attention to that part of it. That's fine. Go ahead. I'm listening.
May I proceed?
Please repeat.
You're the chairman, okay. No, I'm very aware of, of the, the director. I am the one who introduced Jill to the Council on Aging, and I recommended her. She's excellent. I have nothing to say about her, so I don't know how that was brought in here.
I didn't say, it was saying, I said she's well aware of her roles and responsibilities within the scope of the bylaw. She is, and, and...
And I think the Council on Aging is well aware of their, their role as well, and there's a lack of respect therein.
From not me.
Is what I, I say, yeah.
Yeah.
That's just my opinion, having worked on the council, and, yeah, that's fine. If that's all you want me to say, that's fine.
Next on this agenda is the...
Any other? Any other?
Is it?
How about phone?
Correspondence, Blue Wave Solar. That's on, on schedule, mechanical completion date for that project. This is a solar project that's going on in Westport. Will be, mechanical aspects of it will be completed by March 28th, on March 28th. I'm going to move on to the next one.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the, I just wanted the board to know that the deed has been recorded for par-letway in Twin Pond Circle, which was an actual, you know, former, undertaking formal action of the board to accept as public way, so it has been formally recorded.
So we basically own the streets and the sidewalks.
We do, and all the cars that come along with them, which is great.
They're nice sidewalks, though.
There you go.
Complete Street Program. Millville is fortunate to receive funding for the Complete Streets Program and the Commonwealth. And on March, I'm sorry, Friday, March 23rd, at 1:00 p.m., there's going to be a presentation in Winthrop to award, celebrate the awarding of the grants to 23 cities and towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And at Millville is 315 towns and cities in the Commonwealth, 23 are going to receive funding for, under the Complete Streets Program.
Mr. Chairman, that's a $200,000 grant, and if you look at that actual, you know, map, it's, it's really nice to see our little town there, in the scope of all of these other larger communities. And I want to thank also TDC Engineering and our highway surveyor, and Hillary, our town planner, for working closely on Phase 1, 2, and now the third phase of, of actually being able to be awarded $200,000, which will go towards accessibility of our sidewalks for the Central Street project as well. And we know that that has been an issue that we have been concerned with in terms of improving that accessibility, but, you know, I look forward to being able to apply that to that project as well.
Is anyone from here going?
I'm working on that right now.
Okay.
I don't have a commitment. I know I can't, but I'm looking for an emissary, so if you would like to do that.
I have very limited personal time left at this point of the year.
It's my former speaker, so it doesn't, you know, it would be good to go see that and the...
Schedule is a little tight for me.
And the lieutenant governor's going to be there as well.
Okay.
But I think Brian may be gone.
This is in addition to the, the Central Street project?
Yes, this is in addition to the $1 million that we had obtained.
New business, building fees. I invite Ms. Lincoln Barber.
Pay no attention to those yellow highlighted things you have in front of you.
That's what we heard.
There's not a whole lot of difference. Well, I first came before you, probably July or August of last year. We approved a change, which I have in front of me, but you probably don't. What you have now, anything that's highlighted in gray is a change from what presently exists. At the suggestion of the chairman and common sense, I took six different communities, some near, next door, and some far away, and compared fee schedules. And I found that some were way off compared to everybody else, and when you, when you reviewed the dates that they were approved, without exception, they were 18 to 25 years ago. So when you found communities that had updated their fee schedules in the last four or five years, they were all pretty much in line with what's proposed here. Number one, and number two, as I said to the chairman when we spoke several weeks ago, I was really trying to make the fee schedule work for the town of Millville, not so much be in line with the rest of the world. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. A bunch of things on here. When the line goes all the way across, that's something that was never on the fee schedule before, so we had difficult time answering questions when people wanted to find out what the permit cost was. Some things seem a little bit high or difficult to understand. One of the things I picked up at a meeting from other inspectors is that a temporary occupancy permit, if you issue one with a one-time fee, people will never complete their project, and they'll have a temporary occupancy 20 years later when they go to sell their house. If you make it renewable monthly, then there's an incentive there for them to complete the project to get a permanent one. So if you want to peruse it for a minute and ask any questions, or, I think that it's fairly well thought out, I spent a bit of time on it, and I'd like to see it get approved this evening, so we can post it on the website, go forward with these numbers.
I feel that, you know, this, this is in line with, in line with other communities. There are a couple anomalies, but basically, the law rates the older approvals. So I'll hear a motion to approve the rate schedule as submitted.
Motion to approve fee schedule.
Second, Pat.
Rule.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Lincoln.
Oh, Jesus. Anything else over here? You can report.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is, I'll be looking for a vote to approve and post the election warrant.
Mr. Chairman, you'll see in your packet, our town clerk has put together the election warrant with regards to the polls being open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. She does have a list of all the positions that will be on the ballot. We do have a sample ballot that is here at the town hall, at the front desk, and also it is on the website. So I would be looking to make sure that we can comply with the seven-day notice in advance at the post office, senior center, Millville Public Library, George's Variety, and the town hall.
Thank you. I'll hear a motion to approve the election warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
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 Norm will be out in full force as our constable posting it.
Annual town meeting and special town meeting. I'll be looking for a vote, a motion to close the warrants for May 14th, annual town meeting and April 30th, special town meeting. Questions?
So moved.
Where the warrants?
Yeah, where actually, they've been submitted for the April 30th special town meeting. We do have the placeholders for the three main articles, one being an operational override, one being the disposition of the former town hall, and the other one being the placeholders for the new marijuana bylaws. I was waiting, actually, till you guys set the motion to be able to express that the town planner and the assistant interim planner with Central Mass Regional Planning has put together a time schedule that they believe, with the chairman of the planning board, that they can actually entertain the marijuana bylaw, which we have talked about and I've spoken about in quite detail in the past. It would look like they would have at least a public hearing on March, I mean, April 23rd. They will meet the 14-day posting guidelines. And at their next board meeting, even though they've already been introduced to the general direction for the retail piece of it and the cultivation piece of it, I think I've explained before there are many other types of licenses, but we have only till December 2018 to actually come to grips with how we want to deal with those. So we're trying to take two of the bigger issues and put them before the planning board if they can get through the vetting of it, which many other communities have done, even in a shorter timeframe. But this will comply with at least the public hearing being put out for April 23rd, and the posting will be the closing for them, not the closing, the posting for the newspaper will be, I think, April 3rd and April 9th. So they'll be addressing it in the short term. And then eventually, if they can get through those aspects to approve the language for the actual zoning requirements, that'll be the place to talk about. And then you guys will have it as a final aspect, as a warrant, too.
So a motion to vote to close the warrants for May 14th?
They already made the motion.
I'll second it.
Roll.
Aye.
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 And as far as the other warrant article submission, because we don't have all the language for May 14th, I just heard you express that we've had a number of placeholders put by the town planner for road acceptances, at least four of them. We've also had a number of articles submitted by the building commissioner. And of course, we would have the normal budgetary articles that we would be also going forward with. And also, the planning board in the past had taken a vote to remove the associate planning board member as an elected position. So that will also appear on the... But those will all be more fully detailed to you at the future meeting. And the next meeting for the special town meeting will have more definitive language for the April 30th meeting. But this is just to at least close it to the general boards at this point in time.
Mr. Chair, just a point of order. I have four ayes on that, but I didn't hear Mr. Allen.
I'm going nay, just because I'd rather see, even if it's just a draft, I'd rather see it in front of me, that way I know everything that's on it.
Well, we still vote on the warrant. Like, when the warrant comes before us, we can still vote to remove things. This is to close the warrant so no one else can submit.
Yeah.
And then when we get the warrant, we actually can vote on each article to keep or to dismiss before posting.
I know. I just wanted to, I have to see it.
Is there a placeholder for the player suppressing the high school?
That's part of our actual budgetary thing, yes. I'm aware of that piece of it as well. And we'll be aware, obviously, with the certification for the school. Those are more of the budgetary pieces of it that will be folded into our overall annual budget. And I've got that. And the MES one as well.
Thanks.
Both.
Moving forward. Old business. Special town meeting outreach session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I know that we talked in the presentation about the need for a special town meeting. We did talk about wanting to at least put together a couple of community outreach sessions. The finance committee, the finance director, myself, and of course, any members of this board would be there to actually have this type of forum. We're gearing one up for Wednesday, April 11th at 7:00 PM here at the town hall. And then another one on April 19th, which I believe is a Thursday, is a breakfast forum with the seniors. And so those would be two that we would be having, along with the other kinds of information that we will be posting through our cable television. But those will be the two that we have through the month of April.
So I have a question. In regards to the evening one, have we had MES auditorium for that?
We talked about that. As the finance committee, they felt that they wanted a more intimate session to be able to talk and also have quick access if we needed to put up any kind of slides that would show and demonstrate information. The problem with the MES is it's a very large auditorium, and we didn't feel that they, that this might generate that kind of, we know on the town meeting it will, more than likely. But if you really feel strongly about it, we could do that.
I personally do. I personally think that I'd rather have an empty auditorium than a room that's packed or parking not available, because not every senior will go to the morning session. I just feel that we need to make sure that we plan for the most people attending and getting the information out there, rather than not being able to park, not having a place to sit. I get what they're going for, but I feel...
We were actually planning to reconfigure this room to make it that much more accommodating. But only because we thought about also having it again at the senior center. So that's fine. We can, you know, I can just make sure that they have that as an opening, and I'll talk to the finance committee.
Yeah.
Who are really the ones who are leading this. So it's just one of the things that I let them all decide on that particular date so that we could all come together. But I'm sure that the venue change is not going to be anything that's going to be insurmountable. So I will most definitely convey that to them.
Just my feelings.
No, it's a good...
We spoke about having it at the MES.
Oh, there you are. I didn't see you.
Yeah. I think that would be best.
Okay.
I think we decided at our last finance committee meeting that would probably be a good idea, just purely because of the size of the...
I've had a couple of different messages with that. But that's fine. We can do that. It's, I'll just, I'll talk with Priscilla tomorrow and schedule that.
That's all I was going to say. Let's just check with the MES and see what their scheduling is like.
And secondly, on that is, can we have a page on our website designated just for any information that goes up? So anything that we put out, whether it's the brochure, I know that's scattered. I know the webpage. I use it frequently, so I'm accustomed to it. But I'm thinking there should be a link for, you know, special town meeting and related materials. So if the video, if the slides, if these things are available, they click on that one link and it will bring them to a page that will have the list of them. I think that's important, because, you know, you can navigate if you know it, but if you're not aware of it.
I know.
I think there needs to be just a page for the special town meeting for any information we put out. So if we could do that.
Okay. I'll talk with Ashton at this moment for that.
You currently have a calendar on the Millville website, and on the bottom right-hand side of that calendar, it shows where an individual can register and be sent an email if there's changes on that calendar. So I think you already have it as far as the calendar with meetings coming and cancellation.
This is completely not related to this.
No, not at all.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about...
Just saying, any materials that are put out by the finance, the finance team in relation to the special town meeting, that they would click on one link and it would bring them to a page where all of the information is.
Okay. So the information as opposed to scheduling of meetings or...
Right. This would just be anything that's presented as public information. They don't have to go on finance committee for one thing, but go on the accountant for another, to go on the assesses for the brochure, that everything is then linked through one page for ease for residents.
Just so you know, anything that we've had that's been related to the finances or the changes that have happened in the assessing, they're all on the main page. But we can certainly, I'll talk with Ashton to create it, because that's another piece of it. So...
Just linking. It's not, you know, they do it a lot faster.
Mm-hmm.
And I do it on my page, but on my school page, it doesn't, I'm sure they're quicker than I am.
We will do that. I will, I'll touch base with them tomorrow.
Yeah, I think that's important.
Number nine on the agenda is the selectman's forum. Do you have anything?
I just want, I just want to take the opportunity to thank the town for allowing me nine years to serve as selectman and do what I could do to keep taxes low and services provided for the best of the residents. So, thank you.
Roland, you're welcome. The board recognizes your service. And we have a letter for you, and it basically reads, "Dear Roland, as you are aware, Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and town levels. As a public official for this great town, you have not only taken on the responsibilities of working on behalf of the citizens of Millville, but also an oath to serve the people of this community. This oath of office has required you to serve by abiding and upholding the town's adopted bylaws, along with the laws of the Commonwealth and the nation. Such service is perhaps one of the most noble an individual can undertake in wanting to make a difference in the lives of those who reside in a place we all fondly call home. Your personal service of nine years on the Board of Selectmen does not go unrecognized by your board colleagues, both current and past. Together, in day in and day out, Millville employees and its elected officials provide the diverse services expected by the townspeople on their government, on their government with efficiency and integrity. Your commitment to serve for three consecutive terms has allowed an important continuity of public service, which has allowed the town to maintain its democratic form of government and face many challenges with steadfast local leadership. As colleagues, members of the Board of Selectmen, we are all grateful for the opportunity to serve with you, and thank you for your contribution and dedication to this town. We respect your decision to no longer serve as a member of the Millville Board of Selectmen and appreciate the countless hours you served, you have devoted in representing the townspeople to the best of your ability. We extend our best wishes for continued success in all your future endeavors and collectively appreciate the many achievements we have accomplished over the years working together as the Millville Board of Selectmen."
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roland. Thank you. Just a bluff and a stress-free evening.
I will, I will enjoy my Monday nights. But again, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity.
Your horses will like seeing you on Monday nights.
Yeah, I'll have more horse time, so.
I will miss the brutes. Four children going off, though.
Oh, yeah.
Playoffs is.
Yep. I have a couple of quick things. One is the Central Street drainage issue, that every time it seems we have any kind of storm or melting, I want to say it's 91 Central Street. There seems to be some pooling there. I actually went to see it myself, so I know what's happening now. I don't know if, well, obviously, the highway surveyor's aware of it, because I saw road blockage or cones there. But I just want to...
Are you talking Central or Ironstone?
Ironstone.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
That's what I thought you were talking about.
Ironstone.
Okay. I did see it, too, because I've heard some complaints.
Yeah. So what we need to, just if we could get an update from Mr. Malali, that would be good.
Okay. We can put that on the agenda. I do have other aspects to add, but because it's not on the agenda, we'll take another meeting to do that.
And then if we could just, I don't, this isn't on the agenda either, but just find out or a brief review of how things are going with the Department of Revenue in regards to the budget and what we have planned with them and their input as to the direction we need to go for the town would be good.
That's next on the agenda, so that would be good.
Yeah, excellent.
At least the aspect to address.
Jennifer, do you have anything?
I don't. I took it up in another area, so.
I'll say.
I've just got one, one thing. I just want to make, again, everyone aware that I attended the public hearing, the school committee, last Thursday evening. And basically, just to indicate, the budget has come down from the initial public hearing, but it's still a seven and a half percent increase over the past year. But the way that impacts Millville, that's about a $512,000 increase over the 18 budget. And that, that actually comes out to about 8.4% of... I see Mrs. Regio is here. I thank her for all she's done in working on this process. But we have, the town has a difficult challenge ahead of us regarding the funding of that That's it. That's all I have there. Now we have town administrator and Department of Revenue.
Right. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I did want to follow up, because I know it was one of the suggestions of selectmen who, with regards to the Department of Revenue. And both myself and our finance director and accountant, Justin, have been in discussions with the Department of Revenue, trying to figure out the best way that we can get feedback from them based on the technical assistance report that they did in 2016. And right now, one of the things I think we need to do as we're going forward and talking about an operational override is also to get validation from the Department of Revenue on the changes that have taken place financially, the new financial management policies and practices that have been put in place as a result of that initial report, along with the recommendations to create the town administrator position and many other things that we have tackled with our technology infrastructure and the like that relate to our finances. So one of the things that the Department of Revenue is doing at this moment, and we are providing the information related to the changes and also the budgetary aspects that we have witnessed within not just this past year, but over the last 10 years. So I'm hoping to get an actual report from them, and maybe as early as April 3rd meeting, where we may have some representatives from the Department of Revenue appear before the board, based on being able to evaluate what the town has done in the interim, even since I've been here, and also what the recommendations that they made that we've actually taken steps... steps in addressing and whatever ones still remain outstanding. So, that will happen hopefully by April 3rd. If not, I expect it will definitely be before the special town meeting. The next on the town administrator update, I just wanted to let you know that our bond authorization apportionment for chapter 90 has come through. I think a lot of people think we have an amazing budget for our roads and our infrastructure related to our roads. For a number of years, we've come in at about 102,000 and 103,000 in totality for state actual assistance for our roadways. And many of you already know that we have a pretty much a part-time highway department to do all of that, but it went up $7,000, I have to be kind of happy about that, to 110,542 for the annual apportionment, so we'll be including that, obviously, as we consider what our road infrastructure is going to be for the next budget cycle. So, it went up about $7,000. So, that was good news, as opposed to down. It's been pretty much a lateral, you know, every single year being at the same amount. The next item on the agenda, I also wanted to share with you as we are putting together our budgets and we have a lot of things that are contractual, that the municipal insurance rates related to MIA have come through. And last year, I think we explained that both myself, the chief, and many other department heads put together a pretty significant reduction list to try to balance our budget. There was a lot of sacrifices that were made, including in the area of insurance. And the insurance provision for town hall employees was an area in which there was major changes that I had asked to be put forward to try to save any amount that we could. Last year's rates were about 15.9% and because I made changes and recommended them related to the insurance coverage in terms of deductibles, the employees went from one of the most favorable categories to a tier three. That allowed me to get enough savings to help us balance our budget with the amount of cuts that were being recommended by the finance director. That brought us down from an eight, 15.3, 15.9% to about 8.4%. And this year, the rates are lower, we're coming in a little over 7%. So, that's good news for us, we're not as high, but again, that's with the built-in caveat that the town employees, once again, are making that sacrifice in the type of benefit plan they have. And I appreciate that, it was something I discussed with every person who this insurance change had affected last year and knowing going forth that they were helping this community in every small way that they can, and, and that's still significant. And the next item on the town administrator update is the light installation at 290 Main Street. It's there, it's there, along with floodlights. So, National Grid has come, they wanted to come earlier, selectmen, Dean Wing, but we had a couple of large snowstorms in between and very high winds, so it finally, they were up there today, they worked diligently, they not only replaced the pole, but they replaced the transformer, put in a newer streetlight that was brighter and also a floodlight. And also, the, this board took a position to put a streetlight up on Lorraine, the corner, Lorraine and Hill, and that has been done as well. So, I just wanted to update the board that those two public safety recommendations were followed through with. I don't know how bright it will be, because tonight's the first night, so if it looks like the light should be angled some way differently, or is it shining in your eyes when you go down, please let me know, because we're going to change that right away if that's the case.
I don't think the work has been completed, however, there's a portion of the old pole still hanging out there.
Yeah, they typically wait, so the telephone will come out and they'll move their wires and the next company and then the last one gets the pole.
I also want to, I want to extend appreciation that Michael DeChecco, who serves on our finance committee and our capital planning, also works for National Grid, and he was somebody who worked behind the scenes to make it happen as quickly as possible, so I appreciate that. We have some good people in town that do help us with some of our major projects and they do it all for only the satisfaction to know it's been helped. And the last item is about the open space recreation planning committee has asked me once again, as a member as well, to implore that you go online and do the Survey Monkey for our open space recreation plan, which is on schedule to be completed at the beginning of June, with hopes and aspirations to apply for a pretty substantial grant after that, but we need your input. It's, it's really good, I think I put in your packets. If you haven't, you can come to the town hall and you don't want to do it online, we have copies here, we have copies at the senior center, we just ask you to try to get them done. Probably right around the election time, we're going to close it and then we'll also be having, I just want to remind everybody, a community forum related to the open space recreation planning committee on April 12th at 7:00 PM that will be here. And that's all I have for the town administrator update. Your next meeting regularly will be April 3rd and tonight, the town clerk has asked me to get wet signatures for all of the warrants, so you can start off on the far side and I will start the...
Joe, I have one more thing. Here's my keys for the old building and the bar for here.
Thank you, Roland.
Bronze loads, maybe.
Yeah, that's the old building, so those might be framed.
I, I have, I didn't turn my old ones in either.
I think, yeah, I have mine at home.
I forgot I have.
Do you want this back?
No, that's free from Milton Federal.
Ah, okay.
Black pen.
I'll steal it. Mrs. Callahan, could I steal your pen?
Oh, sure.
Mine is a fancy, fancy, burgundy. Either that or broken blue crayon tonight.
Because she's got seven.
Oh, he has seven.
Yeah, she wants all seven to be signed.
Yeah, oh, I get it.
Anybody got an extra pen?
I have burgundy.
We'll just share this one.
Yeah.
I now have two Fs in that name.
This one I wasn't there for. I said that one I wasn't there for.
Yeah.
I got this one.
Get rid of this one. You have that, Jen.
Okay, thank you.
That's the warrant.
Oh, it's the minutes.
One, so if I can't...
Oh, but you need to sign that one, that one. Oh, yeah, you need to sign all these, Jen.
Okay.
Oh, you still have to sign everything?
He has to do the warrants.
I signed three warrants. Signed something.
Signed the minutes. Oh, no.
No, I didn't.
You signed the warrants, seven of them.
Are we done with some of those, Roland? That's my son, Tommy.
Oops.
Send those, Tommy.
Yours got signed.
You got the other ones already done, sorry.
Okay.
Just double check.
Five years left on a cable contract.
That was, that was a good thing you did.
That was so old, it was like stone age, the old, original one.
But Charter no longer exists.
Right, now it's spectral.
Go back to the old days of cable vision. That was our first one in town.
Yeah.
And since we don't have a meeting before Easter, happy Easter to everybody, have a blessed day with your family.
Hopefully, we won't be celebrating in a foot of snow.
Do you want to adjourn us?
Sure, I'll send to adjourn.
Second. Roll.
Aye.
Aye.